We have a one-minute warning and we'll be about to begin. Good evening, welcome to the Half Moon Bay City Council Meeting of October 20th. We'll call please.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Chair Kowalczek.
Here.
Mayor Fraser.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin after our post pumpkin festival weekend. Hope everyone had a good time. I know so many in the community volunteered, so just a blanket big thank you to everyone. I know the nonprofits really do capitalize and benefit from this, so we'll hear back from beautification in the coming weeks to see how well everything was done. We did not have a closed session, so we'll go right to city council reports. And I'll go to welcome back Vice Mayor Kowalczek.
Thank you. So I was gone for a little bit. I traveled through Asia for the last month and from business and a little bit of a holiday. And it was very interesting, one quick story. Every word I met went when I shared that I was an American. I was very pleased, that was just really warmly received. And I was surprised by that being so, I spent a lot of time near Pakistan and it was really quite heartening to have that happen. Since I've been back, I participated in two relevant things for the community. One, volunteered at Pumpkin Festival for the Caprio Education Foundation, helping them raise money through some photographs with the giant pumpkin. And I think they had a very successful year raising money for their organization. And then I also attended the sewer authority, participated in the sewer authority recycled water committee meeting last night. And with anything, with any project, we're all enthusiastic for the project to create and sell recycled water to the golf course. But as you get into details, it gets more and more complicated and we are in the details and thus it is more complicated and costs and quality levels come into play. So we're trying to sort those things out. We were hoping to have some traction before year end to apply for grants. It is getting less and less likely that that will happen because putting together a meaningful project is pretty complicated, but we're working pretty aggressively to do that. And all of the entities are cooperating in that, so everyone's working hard to make sure all, everybody's respective interests are represented. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Muller, straight from the pumpkin farm?
Yeah, I'll try to be as brief as possible after leaving home this morning at 3:30. But it's okay, it's pumpkin time, so. The pumpkin wayoff was a great morning on the coast side here. Briefly, the top three or four pumpkins in the western United States came to Half Moon Bay and that was very special. Our other two wayoffs in Elk Grove and Usigee Farms, they always try to outdo us, but I think Half Moon Bay definitely shined. And the Giant Pumpkin Commonwealth Organization that represents all the giant pumpkin growers are going to be probably meeting in London this year, or in 2016, I'm sorry. But they recognize the largest volume of weight and I think Half Moon Bay might have a chance at winning that one. And so that's exciting there. And then Steve DeLeedis from Oregon won this year because we all had trouble with our weights and whatever happens down here. And then Saturday morning, I ran over to MacDutra Plaza and it was just an amazing sight of pancake builders and makers. And I think great results and thank you staff for the expansion of MacDutra Plaza on the Kelly Avenue. It really was very successful. I think there was a thousand pre-ordered pancake breakfasts, so I did not even have time to have a pancake breakfast, but we did take pictures and hopefully someday we'll, and I know staff has worked on that too. Everyone I talked to just loved the situation. The line was backed up all the way to its Italia times. So that was exciting. And I think more interesting after what I deal with at the farm, Monday morning at, again, 4:30, I was going down Main Street and I tell you, there wasn't a piece of paper on Main Street and around. And I think that's a real tribute to everyone involved in this process because I pick up garbage every morning on Highway 1 and also all over my place. So we did have a visitor at the farm from, executive from Burning Man. And quite interesting to figure out how this Burning Man world works, but they have a philosophy up there. It's L-N-T, leave no trace. I didn't realize that, so they do not have garbage cans at Burning Man. And eighty thousand people, whatever you bring in, you take home. So very fascinating discussion. He lives on the coast, so we're going to try to pick his brain a little bit more how they handle all of that. So that's, that's very exciting. And then compliment again to staff and our local portable unit group. They had over a hundred on the coast. They were all removed when I got up Monday morning and they did a great job and I thank them. It's a very important part of American debris company here in Half Moon Bay, did a great job there. So our local company stood out again. So that's kind of where we are and we got another eleven days and we go to bed.
Thanks, John. And you should be congratulated. I know you've given work to a lot of people who have been traveling and could use some extra help, so you've enlisted them to help you with the pumpkin farm too and should be congratulated for giving those people an opportunity and a meal. Thank you. I'm a busy few weeks. I attended the sea level vulnerability assessment advisory board with the county and many other interested personnel. We've been talking a lot about sea level rise. It's having serious conversations, both the bay and they're not forgetting us on the coast side either, looking at different ways how it can be funded to protect that, to reinforce our wetlands all around. And there's just, everyone's starting to get involved and really recognizing it as a serious item. Also at CCAG, we had discussions on sea level rise at our last meeting a week or so ago. Want to thank the student body board at the high school for inviting me to come up to Homecoming last week. So that was fun to see all the students and all their enthusiasm and that's, that's a real special moment to be a part of that. And this week, two things, we talk about housing and opportunity for people. The county is sponsoring two housing leadership coalitions and I'll be attending that with staff this week and hope to bring back some information and perhaps some ideas. I know many of our teachers here are having just a tough time of time in being able to live here on the coast as well as so many people. It's also a widespread problem within the Bay Area and the county. So maybe there's some opportunities with everyone brainstorming to find a way to get some housing for the people who live and work here and who support our service industry. And also, I'd like to thank beautification for another successful pumpkin festival as well and for all the cleanup. I think at some point, we should have a webcam on Main Street to, to watch how a hundred thousand people disappear and everything gets cleaned up. That would be kind of fun to see in the future. I do have an item, Main Street Beautification Committee had a donor give them a sizable amount of money to help with MacDutra Plaza and they'd like to put a plaque up for them. So if we could have that come to council formally to upset, to accept in the next meeting, that sounds good. All right, good. And also this Saturday, we are going to have a Peninsula Clean Energy Event. We've been talking about for some time, finding renewable resources for generating electricity. And we're going to have an open house this Saturday, same time as the farmer's market from nine to one. It's an open house, so you can come in and out at any time and get information. There'll be an ongoing presentation. There'll be people to talk to and more information on Peninsula Clean Energy. And that's this Saturday, next door in the EOC from nine to one. All right, we'll go to the city manager for any updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to apologize, we've had some technical difficulties with the production of the agenda, that which is listed on the agenda. So there's a revised agenda, I believe, at, in the table in the back there. And perhaps the old agenda did not have listed that we'll have a presentation today from Connect the Coast Side. So I'd like to allow them to make their presentation before I share my comments.
Can you have Connect the Coast Side come up right now? Sorry, I downloaded my agenda the day before that happened.
Well, thank you, Mayor Fraser and council members as well as city staff. I'm Don Horseley, County Supervisor for District Three. And I'm actually here to introduce our planner, Rob Bertoli, on this Connect the Coast Side. As you know, we're doing a number of different studies. We're doing Connect the Coast Side, we're doing a Princeton plan, and we're also doing congestion management. The Connect the Coast Side, we've had a number, several public meetings. They're all, as you know, everybody in coast side has a lot of opinions and so we're going to continue doing it. We're actually going to extend the time for more public comment. In fact, this Thursday evening at seven o'clock, I believe it's going to be seven o'clock, it was originally seven thirty, but the MCC requested it be at seven, actually they wanted seven thirty, but we set the time for seven o'clock, so the public will again have an opportunity to take a look at the plan. There are actually a couple, two different looks at it. And by the way, with the Connect the Coast Side, one of the, the reason that we're doing it and the reason we are required to do it is because of the county's LCP, or Local Coastal Plan, was approved by the Coastal Commission and they required that we do this study. They also required that we include the city of Half Moon Bay and we have been working with your staff very effectively. So it does look at the whole corridor from Half Moon Bay all the way to Devil's Slide. It does talk also about build-out and I think that's one of the things that really scares people. People feel like gee, this is, what does this mean, build-out, are we going to have more houses? Well, it's neither a pro-growth nor an anti-growth. It has nothing to do with growth, but what it does do is that we recognize that the county, the unincorporated county, our LCP requires that there could be no more than forty units a year. Fact of the matter is, there's never forty units a year. There's at most somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen or less, but nevertheless, that's in our LCP. The city of Half Moon Bay has a growth limit of one percent a year, so we took the one percent and the forty and we projected that out. So it doesn't mean that that's going to happen. There are other constraints that could constrain that. Could be public policy, it could be water, it could be, you know, the increasing traffic. So, but in order to have a plan that really talks about how you mitigate traffic and we all, you know, frankly, every part of the county from the 101 corridor to the 280 corridor to, in fact, I have to do a public community meeting in Menlo Park because of their complaints about traffic. Traffic is a major problem everywhere we go. So this plan is to try and figure out what can we do with other kinds of resources. And some of the things that we'll explore, increase public services, increase bus service, perhaps the shuttle services, things of that sort. And of course, also the parallel trail, which is important, I think, for residents of the coast side, especially when you have big events like the Dream Machine or the Pumpkin Festival. It's a good way to get around. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rob Bertoli.
And thank you Supervisor Bertoli for the introduction. So, so good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Rob Bertoli and I am the project planner for Seminole County for Connect the Coast Side. And we have a brief PowerPoint presentation to update you on the status of the project. I can't change slides. It's blinking at me. Thank you. We'll let Neil just do it manually this way. So tonight, this is just an outline for the presentation. It's a description of the change in the project scope and the schedule of Connect the Coast Side. Tonight, we're going to discuss two aspects of it, consideration of an alternative development forecast and alternative transportation performance standards. And we'll also talk about the next step for the project. And then before we go into further detail on the next slide, we can talk about what Connect the Coast Side is, this is a brief reminder, and the work that we've undertaken so far from the county. So next slide, please. So the plan will identify measures to ensure future residential and non-residential development can be supported by the future transportation system and infrastructure, specifically on the unincorporated coast and the city of Half Moon Bay. And so this is a requirement of our local coastal program, that we prepare a comprehensive transportation management plan as part of our LCP, like I mentioned. So this is a needed, a needed step in that application. So if you can go to the next slide. So as part of the project objectives, we're looking to estimate the build-out and potential developments of the mid-coast and Half Moon Bay as permitted by the Seminole County LCP, the Half Moon Bay LCP, both our general plans, zoning and other permanent regulations. We are looking at to identify the potential impacts of growth on traffic, mobility and safety. We're identifying and evaluating measures to minimize and mitigate the impacts of growth and we're also developing a plan for funding and implementing transportation priorities. So since we've come here last, I think it was last spring or so, there has been some changes in the project scope and schedule and we'll go into that in more detail here. So we had a, a number of meetings in the spring of 2005. We had MCC briefing, we had a workshop, and then we also had a briefing here. And from that, we heard a lot of public comments at those meetings. And what the community really asked for was five items here. So it was an analysis of a more reasonable level of development, potential development other than full build-out. The local coastal program for Seminole County requires that we look at full build-out. So we looked at the existing zoning and then the potential development for that. The community really had input that they want in something of a more realistic growth pattern because we don't know when full build-out will be. They were looking to something to see, something in their lifetimes. So we are going to look at a 25-year forecast and we'll get further into that. We also have heard from an analysis needed to be of needs and deficiencies based on multimodal measures and standards, not just vehicle or auto-oriented roadway measures. So we only had our level of service mainly for vehicles. And so we were looking to see how could that affect then pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, public transit and parking. We also, they also heard back from a more context-sensitive solution for transportation and land use options, more upper news for committee input and more time to review the project materials in advance of workshops and other public meetings. And we're going to be having, our next workshop is coming up this Thursday. It actually will be at six thirty still. We were unable to change that as it, as it came out, but we're all hoping for later meetings next time. And I'll give the information at the end of the meeting as well about where that meeting will be. But there will still be two more workshops even after that to discuss information further. And then on the next slide, we actually have the revised project schedule kind of showing what our timeline is. We really elongated the whole project almost by a year to allow for more public input and to respond to the public input that we received in April. So the next workshop, like I said, is this Thursday at six thirty. It is going to be at the Cypress Meadows at 343 Cypress Avenue in Moss Beach, and I'll repeat that at the end. And then we also will have another workshop, typically scheduled for March to look at the revised transportation alternatives, actual improvements that we're going to propose possibly. And then Workshop Five will focus on land use policies that will come out of this plan. So we definitely are trying to get more public input, more public comments and available, giving the opportunity to the public for that opportunities. So the next slide. So tonight, it's going to be broken really up into two sections of what we're looking at right now. And so the first section is a consideration of alternative forecasts for development. So this is the 25-year forecast I was talking about. Instead of doing a full build-out analysis, which we still are doing because we are required to do that by our local coastal program, we're also trying to look at a more realistic timeline of what could happen in the next 25 years for the mid-coast and Half Moon Bay. So the study area, just to remind you guys, is a comprehensive, so the comprehensive management point, which is the CTMP, extends from Devil's Slide up north to the southern end of Half Moon Bay and from I-280 and 92 to the ocean. That is the study area that we're looking at. So the first step really goes into the alternative forecast and like I said, we are, what we're looking at is 25-year forecasts, so 2040 will be the date for that. It's to use as our baseline for a congestion management plan. It provides an alternative to the full build-out analysis, which we, which we still be using. And we've updated some data and assumptions since that full build-out analysis happened. Those updates mainly focused around how we looked at non-residential development. It was very difficult to find non-residential development square footage numbers, so we switched those to jobs, which I thought was a more accurate number from A-BAG. We also had some adjustments to proposed development intensities in our general plan. And then we also adjusted some of the pipeline projects and that really included Big Wave up on the mid-coast. So what we're proposing is a, what's called a constrained development potential forecast and this would account for mid-coast and Half Moon Bay growth control measures and a market projection from the city of Half Moon Bay. We did look at water constraints. We found that it was a relatively moving target and was difficult to put down into an actual analysis for a 25-year forecast. We also found that for the most part, those restrictions can change because they are on caps, on connections. That's something that is possible and change unlike Measure D for Half Moon Bay, unlike the LCP policies that require the forty units max in the mid-coast. Those are more difficult things to change. And we also compared them to our development trends and regional projections that A-BAG has put together and they came out relatively consistent. So again, just kind of diving further down into the growth control constraints, it talks about our LCP policy for forty units, it talks about Measure D for the one percent annual growth. When we actually looked at the development forecast for Half Moon Bay, it actually turned out that the zoning base analysis is more limiting than Measure D actually is for Half Moon Bay. We also used Half Moon Bay's market projections that was conducted under 2014 update for the general plan. So we have applied those projected growth rates for both residential and resident, non-residential development in Half Moon Bay. So this is, the, the market study kind of was, these shows that growth rates that reflect our best understanding of the interaction between the market demand and the development constraints in Half Moon Bay. While the forecast, the market rate forecast ended in 2035, we were able to extrapolate by more years out on that market study to get it to match the 2040 numbers. And the market study indicates the least amount of non-residential development in Half Moon Bay compared to the mid-coast. So the next slide, this is just a general bar graph that I can go into more numbers on, showing the overall constrained residential development forecast. As you can see, the unincorporated mid-coast is on the left-hand side, Half Moon Bay is in the middle and the total numbers are there on the right. So the light blue colors, so existing residential development, there's a small, thin, a dark blue line in there that shows pipeline, so existing projects that are under review or have been approved but not yet built. And then future in that green color showing what is potential development up to 2040. So number-wise, let's see here, there were 8,781 residential units in the study area, pretty much evenly split between Half Moon Bay and the mid-coast, 4,300 of them in the mid-coast and 4,481 in Half Moon Bay. Together with the current units and the pipeline, this is results in about 5,416 units in the unincorporated mid-coast and 5,335 units in Half Moon Bay. So a total of about 10,750 in the study area by 2040. So this represents a 20% increase in unincorporated Seminole County in the mid-coast area and a 19% increase in Half Moon Bay with a 22% increase overall and that roughly breaks out to 76 units per year. And the constrained, non-residential development forecast, again, same kind of color scheme. You notice that this is dramatically different because of how many jobs are being shown for the unincorporated mid-coast compared to Half Moon Bay and I will explain that here in a second. So existing non-residential development is really not reported and there's a lot of, there's not a lot of data on square footage numbers. So we took A-BAG's projections for 2015 for jobs and then did estimates based off of square footage for the unincorporated area and, and Half Moon Bay. So jobs are allocated based on existing land use patterns. The future, like I said, the future development for jobs is then assumes on square footage ratios for each land category. So in the unincorporated area, there, we show from A-BAG numbers, there are about 2,500 jobs. In Half Moon Bay, there were 5,300 jobs. By 2040, we project, again, from the county side and the unincorporated area, we're doing this just off really the zoning and what we, we believe that we will develop in the next 25 years, will be an increase of 2,443 jobs. We also found that for the most part, those restrictions can change because they are on caps, on connections, that's something that is possible and change unlike Measure D for Happum Bay, unlike the LCP policies that require the 40 units max in the midcoast. Those are more difficult things to change. And we also compared them to our development trends and regional projections that A-BAG has put together and they came out relatively consistent. So again, just kind of diving further down into the growth control constraints, it talks about our LCP policy for 40 units, it talks about Measure D for the 1% annual growth. When we actually looked at the development forecast for Happum Bay, it actually turned out that the zoning base analysis is more limiting than Measure D actually is for Happum Bay. We also used Happum Bay's market projections that was conducted under 2014 update for the general plan. So we have applied those projected growth rates for both residential and non-residential development in Happum Bay. So the market study kind of was, these shows that growth rates that reflect our best understanding of the interaction between the market demand and the development constraints in Happum Bay. While the forecast, the market rate forecast ended in 2035, we were able to extrapolate by more years out on that market study to get it to match the 2040 numbers. And the market study indicates the least amount of non-residential development in Happum Bay compared to the midcoast. So the next slide, this is just a general bar graph that I can go into more numbers on, showing the overall constrained residential development forecast. As you can see, the unincorporated midcoast is on the left-hand side, Happum Bay is in the middle and the total numbers are there on the right. So the light blue colors show existing residential development. There's a small, thin, a dark blue line in there that shows pipeline, so existing projects that are under review or have been approved but not yet built. And then future in that green color showing what is potential development up to 2040. So number-wise, let's see here, there were 8,781 residential units in the study area, pretty much evenly split between Happum Bay and the midcoast, 4,300 of them in the midcoast and 4,481 in Happum Bay. Together with the current units and the pipeline, this is results in about 5,416 units in the unincorporated midcoast and 5,335 units in Happum Bay. So a total of about 10,750 in the study area by 2040. So this represents a 20% increase in unincorporated Seminole County in the midcoast area and a 19% increase in Happum Bay with a 22% increase overall and that roughly breaks out to 76 units per year. And the constrained non-residential development forecast, again, same kind of color scheme. You notice that this is dramatically different because of how many jobs are being shown for the unincorporated midcoast compared to Happum Bay and I will explain that here in a second. So existing non-residential development is really not reported and there's not a lot of data on square footage numbers. So we took A-BAG's projections for 2015 for jobs and then did estimates based off of square footage for the unincorporated area and Happum Bay. So jobs are allocated based on existing land use patterns. The future, like I said, the future development for jobs is then assumes on square footage ratios for each land category. So in the unincorporated area, we show from A-BAG numbers, there are about 2,500 jobs. In Happum Bay, there were 5,300 jobs. By 2040, we project, again, from the county side and the unincorporated area, we're doing this just off really the zoning and what we believe that we will develop in the next 25 years, will be an increase of 2,443 jobs in the midcoast to bring that almost to 5,000. In Happum Bay, because we're taking into account the market rate study, which dramatically drops this number, we are projecting only 370 jobs to bring the total to 5,704 by 2040. Again, that lower number really is driven both on the residential side but particularly on the non-residential side by that market study that we're incorporating. So the next slide talks about alternative transportation performance standards and I would be more than happy to break the presentation up if you have questions about the forecast and I can take those now or if you'd like me to continue to the end and we can talk about alternative options if you'd like, whatever your preference is. Okay, I will keep going then, thank you. So another comment that we received, like I said, is to look at multimodal and potentially other types of ways we can look at levels of service for vehicles. So the purpose of the transportation performance standards is to evaluate existing and planned transportation infrastructure and services that are adequate to meet the expected travel demand growth on the midcoast and Happum Bay. On the next slide, we talk about what was existing. So this is what we talked about in April at our last presentation. It was mainly auto-focused. We had roadway segments that were capacity-based levels of service, which is LOS. Signaled intersections was delay-based LOS. Unsignaled intersections was also delay-based and we had no other performance standards for any other modes of traffic. I'm sure you're very familiar with levels of service and what that concept is. Intersection standards usually mean measure delay, how much a delay a vehicle encounters at an intersection. Roadway segment is the road between two intersections usually and we measure LOS of how quickly traffic is allowed to go through it. So what we recommend instead is to kind of look at LOS exemptions and modifications for this plan. So for low minor approach volumes, so especially in the midcoast and unincorporated areas, there's lots of times where you're entering Highway One and there's no stoplight on Highway One, but there are stop signs on the minor side streets approaches. We're looking at tweaking how we look at levels of service for those intersections. Same thing for segments that emphasize use of more than one mode. So if we have bike lanes in certain segments, we may look at levels of service in a different way. We are also trying to create standards that ensures pedestrian and bicycle mobility, safety and comfort. So we're going to have a way to measure what their facilities are like and what their needs are. And we're also going to look at standards for public transit service and parking. So go a little bit more in-depth on the vehicle standards. So roadway segments, so what we're proposing is to remove the current capacity-based levels of service and introduce a delay index. So a congestion travel time versus free flow travel time. So what this would do is what's proposed is to be a two-hour, excuse me, during a, it's a ratio that we're trying to propose. So the delay index is calculated between the time traveled during the peak hour and the free flow of traffic. So if it took you 20 minutes to get somewhere during traffic and it took, under traffic conditions, under peak day times and it would take you 10 minutes otherwise, under free flow conditions, we would consider that a ratio of two. So what we're proposing then is to have this ratio of two be used during weekday peak commute hours and midday recreation peak hours on weekdays, or weekends, excuse me. So what this would also mean would, and if there are bike facilities or other multimodal facilities at the segment, then we are proposing a delay index of three. So again, if it took you 10 minutes under free flow, we would allow for 30 minutes under congestion at peak if you had a bike lane or a pedestrian facility. So this will hopefully look at, provide better congestion belief for all users as if we only look at vehicle traffic, there is possibility that road improvements would hinder other multimodal uses. The majority of the intersections in the study area are unsignaled, especially in the midcoast, and are only controlled by stop signs. Any intersection where signal warrants is not met, would not be subject to existing LOS standards and any improvement to these highways should balance the need of the minor streets with the free flow of traffic from Highway One. Getting into what we're looking at for pedestrians, the Seminole County Comprehensive Bike and Pedestrian Plan presented a pedestrian index, walking score that modeled walking demand throughout the county. So we took this index and applied it to the midcoast area and the city of Happum Bay to find out where there is medium and high walking activity. Then based off of this, there is a standard that the city of San Francisco has used for both bike and pedestrians that essentially creates a pedestrian environmental quality index. And what that means is that based off of certain facilities that they have, they can score the segments of the road to see whether they have crosswalks, to see whether it's a lighted area, to see what the facilities are available for the pedestrians and then give that segment a certain score. So what, again, what we're requiring under this alternative is that the index would look at these five major factors, intersection safety, traffic volume, street design, the land use around it and the perception of safety for the pedestrian and then assign a score to the road segment or intersection. So what we'd also then be looking at as part of this would be the minimum spacing between crossings on Highway One and then the maximum wait time to go across said crossings along Highway One. So on the next slide, we go into a little diagram here that talks about the recommendations. So if the segments was a, was, the demand score was 20 or lower, we would not say you would need to make any improvements to the pedestrian conditions because it just warranted. However, if that segment was attached or near a bus stop, trailheads or beach access, you would at least need to have a cross, say, a way, a crossing mechanism for the pedestrians in that area. If the demand score is between 21 and 30, so a medium demand, we would require that the pedestrian quality index have a score of at least 40 and then crossing density every quarter of a mile. If it was 30 or higher, then we would ask for pedestrian quality index of 60 and then against crossing still remaining at quarter of a mile. So that would be the actual, that would be the analysis that we could use to figure out which segments meet that criteria and then the improvements could come later. Similar to pedestrians, we also have a bike quality index. So we are looking at segments along Highway One specifically and creating risk of bike conditions, again, using that similar matrix that we talked about before. Particularly when we're looking at bike parking, which is another thing that we wanted to look at, not only in the actual bike routes, but in the parking once you got there, at beach access points and major trip generators, bike parking should have an average occupancy of no greater than 85% during weekend, midday peak. So we're looking to, you know, if we're trying to get people out of cars and we were encouraging them to take their bikes, we want them to have a place to put them once they get to their actual facility. And then on the next slide, again, it has that table that shows, I'm sorry, this is actually transit, I apologize. So we also looked at public transit as creating standards for that. So this recommendation is talking about SAM Trans specifically in buses. So what we recommend is no more than 85 standing capacity utilization. And what that is, and what standing capacity is, is that includes everyone that's actually on the bus. So it actually includes people that are sitting in chairs on the bus and also standing. So it's people that are being loaded into the bus and we're asking for that, not in more than 85% is used of that capacity within a two-hour average. The other thing that we're looking at and working with SAM Trans is revising the bus stop amenity standards. The top have the existing standards used by SAM Trans with a bus stop with a bench requiring 125 boardings and a bus stop with a shelter requiring 250. What we're asking is to drop those standards down so that we can have the facilities needed for a bench at 25 and a shelter at 100 boardings. We know that there isn't, the ridership is not the same as it is in the urbanized areas across the hill, but we want to have the bike facilities, or excuse me, the pedestrian facilities for people that will ride the bus here. So we're trying to work with SAM Trans to create those standards. One of the last standards that we're taking a look at is parking. So for our recommendations, we're taking a look at using weekend, midday, peak as our benchmark and during that time, no more than 85 of the capacity of those lots could be utilization within a quarter mile of these visitor-serving facilities. And one of the things that we're looking at is not just creating new parking, but ways, other strategies that we can mitigate those issues, whether it be fees for parking, whether it be more support, like adding more bikes, bike racks to encourage people to take multimodal uses, better signage, better access to the facilities or working with landowners within the general area. Because we don't want to have it spill out of the parking lots, we understand that can be a problem. So what are some ways, without having to pave and get new parking spaces, can we use to better utilize the parking that we have? So the final slide I have to give you tonight is just the next steps. So like I said, mentioned before, our community workshop is this Thursday, October 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Cypress Meadows. We have a presentation to the Seminole County Planning Commission in November on the 4th and then we'll hear back from the community and we'll take a look at the evaluation of the transportation needs and deficiencies that come up with the development forecast and then we'll develop and evaluate the transportation needs and land use strategies. So we will have two more workshops before the plan becomes draft. The next one will focus on the revised transportation alternatives for the project, so improvements and strategies for that area and that is tentatively scheduled for a time in March. So obviously we'll come back to here to update you on the progress of the plan before that workshop occurs. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
That was a lot of information.
That was very detailed, though, thank you. And we have the accompanying slides. Does everyone have any questions off the top of their head? Yes, go ahead.
Just one question. When you were talking about the changing the metric for level of service, I think for auto or I think it was to a delay index, what were the timeframes you were going to measure that? Because I just want to make sure the obvious is covered, that it's including our commute time and we have obviously significant traffic issues in non-commute time.
We, for the alternative standards for the LOS measurements, let me get my analysis here. If I recall correctly, and I want to confirm this, we were going to do, it was peak AM commute, peak PM commute and weekend mid-peak. So we would look at commute times on weekdays, AM and PM peak and then we would look at midday, weekend, peak. So we would not only take a look at the commute in and out in the mornings, but then also on weekends.
And then, sorry, midday, just so I'm clear, are you talking noon or do you not know? If you don't know, that's fine.
Yeah, we don't know what exactly the peak will be, we have to measure it first.
I see, so you're going to measure, identify the peak and then go with that?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And just for peak on weekend, temperature matters a whole lot, changes the whole equation.
I'm sorry, and seasonality?
Yes.
And I think it's important to factor seasonality into your assessment. Thank you very much for the detailed approach.
I just have a couple of quick things. And when you talked about the transportation, is that looking at shuttles up and down or is that, you know, increasing seventeen or any of them or is it?
That is one of the things that we will be looking at when we come up with our improvements is that, you know, can we look at other ways other than just road improvements to help alleviate some of the traffic? So shuttle buses is one of the things that we'll be looking at.
Okay. And we have some feedback and we can certainly give it to you, that came from our general plan. We met with residents of Moon Ridge about a month or so ago and almost everyone in the room that I'd spoke with, if they had a safe access from Moon Ridge to town, they would be riding bikes and that's whether it's to work or to schools. So that was a very important thing, hearing that from that segment of the community.
I just want to emphasize one thing in conclusion that Rob's gone through. We, you know, we started off talking about things like buildout, but that's not, the reason we have to do that because that's required if we're going to do any planning for the future. But I hope you all noticed that we did not talk about freeways, causeways, road whitens. We talked about pedestrians, public transportation, park and rides, bicycles. So I just want to emphasize, those were the things that we really focused on. We did not, again, we did not focus on freeways. So I want to thank Rob for the great presentation and if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
And thank you for clarifying that. We get a lot that there's being houses built on bluff tops, so I'm sure it'll be that there's freeways up and down and that's absolutely not happening.
Absolutely not happening.
Thank you.
Exactly true.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving us the time.
All right. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Just a couple of brief presentations or comments. I wanted to just add my congratulations to this community for such a wonderful community event of the Pumpkin Festival. I think it went very smoothly. I also like to thank my staff for the work that they've done to make sure that the Pumpkin Festival goes very smoothly. The second thing I wanted to report on just real briefly is the Pillar Citos Creek Bridge Project. As you know, it's very critical infrastructure for this community. The council was very firm in its commitment to making sure that that piece of infrastructure gets reopened last August and before, had a special meeting to get that going and we're very close to making that happen. We are still on schedule and it's a very, very tight, tight schedule, but we're still on schedule. So I just wanted to report that and to let the community know that tentatively, November 14th at 9:30, we will have a ribbon cutting.
That's great, that's exciting. It'll be done this year. That's if weather holds, big caveat on all of that.
City Manager, would you mind commenting on the replacement of the railings going down to the beach? Staff, I look like did a great job on that, it looks like.
Yeah, and actually, I'll have our interim community development director maybe give us a more thorough explanation of the work that was done there. It's a piece of infrastructure too. We've been, as you know, for many, many years, there's been some deferred maintenance on some of the facilities and infrastructure in the community. We've been trying to go through that list and trying to especially address those that have some safety concerns. So we've done some great work there recently.
Sure. I hope a lot of folks have been able to get out to the new stairway. The, we went out several months ago and really started looking at the existing conditions and we had a mess. Frankly, the rails had not been touched in pretty much about 20 years since it was originally constructed as part of the Ritz Carlton Project. So a local contractor, Wayland Construction fabricated and replaced all of the railings along that stairwell going from the Canyana Verde area there down to the beach with stainless steel, which should last a good long time. One of the issues and challenges that we had moving forward with replacing the railing was we also noted that there had been significant erosion underneath the landing, the bottom landing for the stairs. Basically, they were being held up by air and air alone. So we also proceeded to move forward with some engineering design and if you go down there now, you'll see there's multiple jacks been placed underneath the concrete landing and providing for stability for that infrastructure there. That is an interim step. We will be proceeding with design of a more permanent fix to the stairs, but that should hold for as long as we need to, to get the permits from Coastal Commission. I would say that Coastal Commission staff has been extremely, exceedingly good to work with with regard to this whole project. They recognize the need to, one, deal with the safety and issues and they also deal with the fact of this access to the coast is extremely important. So they've been extremely helpful and were moved along very quickly to issue two different emergency permits for us for those improvements. So a job well done and thank you to them as well for that work. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, thank you. All right, we'll move now to public forum. We'll move now to public forum, and we've got some new cards from some new speakers here. Just to let everyone know, you have three minutes, and if there's any need for a translator, we can translate through our city manager. So first up, we have Jimmy Benjamin. Jimmy, you had two cards, so for public forum.
So just for clarification, one of the cards I submitted was with respect to items eight and nine. I submitted a second card with respect to oral communication. And just when I was hearing the presentation on the coast, is that, is that considered a public comment item tonight?
Public forum, I've got your eight and nine, so.
Okay, so I will comment, I will defer on that one and use my, my three minutes wisely. Thank you for helping me understand that, Mayor. Good evening, council members, staff. I'm, I'm here tonight to discuss an item that I actually have emailed all of the council members privately. This concerns the completion of the terms of the settlement agreement that we reached three years ago. As you probably know, I've had conversations with your staff, and as I said, I've written you individually. And I'm, you know, at this point, it's still a very cordial conversation. I have not felt the need to retain an attorney or go anyplace like that. I want to communicate that I do feel the process is moving rather slowly, and I'm hopeful that things will pick up as we approach the next month or so. I expect the hydrology study will be coming back in, and I'm looking forward to seeing progress. However, there were a couple of new developments that I wanted to be sure were visible. One is that there was a clearing of vegetation in the Kehoe Water Course in the last couple of weeks, in an area near my home, and close to the Sam plant. And there was another project on the Landster Parcel. I won't bore you with the details in our three minutes. But I think that that's not, those are, I like to think that they're inadvertent. I'm going to believe they're inadvertent, but I am concerned. And I just wanted to be sure that you had visibility. I'm sure that Magda will be briefing you on all of those things if she hasn't already. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get, get that process finished quickly. Thank you very much for your time considering the settlement agreement.
Thank you. John Olem, followed by Dorian Garrity.
Thanks for having me up here. I guess I'm here to talk about Godbe Research. I believe that's how it's spelled, or pronounced. This was the company that was selected to do some sort of survey regarding what the community wanted in the library. Godbe Research, interesting choice. What they do, their job is to get you what you want, not find out what anybody here wants. Their job is to find out how to get you what you want. In 2010, city was going broke, and it was. And so city wanted to have a sales tax measure, Measure K, and they hired Godbe. The question that was asked was, to protect the quality of life in the city of Half Moon Bay by maintaining local services, including library hours, 911 emergency, police response, youth and senior programs, services, local police department, park and recreation programs, street and pothole repair, and other city services, shall the city of Half Moon Bay levy a one cent sales tax, which the state cannot take away? Godbe had found out that was a really good talking point. They keep sticking with that. Now, that was in 2010. We paid forty-nine thousand dollars for that survey, and we know how it turned out. They were wrong. Same question, though, in 2015. The same people you're hiring, these professionals, are doing some work for city of Samhail. And they asked the same kind of question. And it comes down to this: Would you rather pay another penny, or would you prefer to live in hell? Now, surprisingly, one-third of the people say they would prefer to live in hell, but usually, two-thirds reliably say that they would prefer to pay the extra penny. And it just goes to show, you will get the answer that you want, if you ask the right questions. And Godbe isn't really afraid of bragging about this. If you want to have a successful bond measure, according to Godbe, you identify the highest achievable tax threshold. You figure out how much you're all willing to pay. Then you determine the arguments and the features that will increase the support. So what you go down there is you ask everybody what feels good, what doesn't, and then they, they are paying other people to pick your brain, so they can figure out how they can get what they want. Evaluating need for contact and content in public information campaign. They decide whether you need to tell anybody about anything, and then the propaganda you should use to get what you want. Determining the best election to get the place to measure on the ballot, and the packaging of the measure for the most success. Now, when it comes to libraries, Godbe is quite good at it. This is how they, this is a factoid on their website. When it comes to passing library revenue measures, satisfying existing users, and attracting new supporters, the use of scientific public opinion research significantly improves the chance of success. Now, how can a scientific poll achieve, improve anybody's chances of success? You're just trying to find out what people want, right? Thanks.
Thank you. Dorian Garrity, followed by Pam Fisher.
Good evening. My name is Dorian Garrity, and I am the president of Advocates for Open Government, or AFOG. And tonight, I am speaking on behalf of AFOGs and the entire organization. Members of AFOG, and including myself, have spoken here at city council and at other elected board meetings multiple times. And the public's interest in AFOG is growing. The public's interest is growing so much that we actually decided it's time to have our first public open meeting. Our kickoff meeting is going to be open to the general public. And we're really excited and pleased to announce that our first public meeting is going to be Sunday, November eighth, from three to five, here at the Ted Akkott Center. As you know, AFOG has always believed that open government begins with open communications. So we would like to open communications with our city council and with our staff, and we would like to invite you to our kickoff meeting. So we hope to see all of you on Sunday, November eighth. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Pam Fisher, followed by Paul Grigorif. And I apologize if I've not said that correctly.
Good evening, Pam Fisher. I have no paper, so this is really not scripted. I wanted to follow up on two issues with the survey. I have received mine. I read it. I believe it was question five that I had the most objection to, in that it was presented as, if the library has to be cut, which programs would you like to sacrifice? Basically, that was the intent. And I don't want to sacrifice any of them. I just want the whole thing to shrink about five thousand square feet, to allow adequate parking for the neighborhood, and to not double-dip on SEQA, on mitigation that has already been handed out to the Boys and Girls Club for use of the middle school parking area. The issue of the survey, I found the visual part of it to be extremely confusing. And again, it is true, if you control the questions, you control the project. So I have to say, I really do agree with John, with what I just heard John Olem say, and that's his point. This hardly seems to be, and it may be a business, but they're doing the job that you've asked them to do, and that is to get answers that's going to satisfy. I saw nothing about financials in there, nothing in terms of what the people can expect in terms of how this is going to impact our yearly budget in this city. Again, I was not happy with it. And the other issue that I wanted to make a comment on was the fact that you cannot duplicate these surveys. It's one per household in order to allow this survey to be valid. Well, ultimately, it may be valid, but it will not be representational. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, followed by Harvey Rohback. And if you could tell me how to say your name correctly?
I'd be happy to. My name is Paul Grigoriev, and I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. Good evening, honorable council members. I'd like to object to your current procedure of not allowing individual council members to add items for discussion to the council's agenda as a matter of right. I believe that such items should not require a long and possibly expensive review by city staff, nor should they require a vote by the full city council before they come before you for discussion. Let me explain. First, I believe that if my representatives are going to represent me, then they need to be assured, at a minimum, that any issue I bring them, if they agree with it, can be placed on the council's agenda for public discussion. Secondly, if a council member finds that an issue I bring to him or her merits discussion on your agenda, then this issue should not necessarily require further study, review, or veto by unelected city staff before it can even see the light of day on the open council agenda. I think that this requirement for staff review is undemocratic and ill-advised. Finally, the council's current agenda-setting procedure, by requiring a majority vote of the entire council, to even place an item on your agenda, seems to risk having the views of the minority swept aside by the majority of council members without open public discussion. I believe there is nothing in the Brown Act that would prohibit council agenda items put forth during open public meetings by duly-elected representatives of the public from being placed for discussion on your open public agenda. In conclusion, I urge you to allow individual council members to place items for discussion upon your public agenda, free from second-guessing by city staff, and not subject to a veto by the majority. This is a matter of simple legislative courtesy and basic democratic values. This concludes my comment, and I request that my remarks be entered into your minutes, and I've given a copy to the clerk. Thank you for letting me appear before you. Good evening.
Thank you. Harvey Rohback, followed by Joaquin Jimenez Jr.
Good evening, council. Harvey Rohback, representing Advocates for Open Government. After the project manager and the architect were hired for the library project, there were concerns of the public about the cost, scope, and design of the library project. But we were told that even though this is the most expensive capital project the city has ever considered, nothing is cast in stone, everything is on the table, we can decide later what the public really wants, but you, you could get your opportunity to comment on the cost and scope. And then, tonight, I'd like to quote from the scope of work for David J. Powers and Associates. This is what you're about to authorize. The scope of work is a point-nine-acre, that's a very small, project. It's the demolition of the existing library and construction of a new two-story, twenty-five-thousand-square-foot library with surface parking, as part of the group study areas. The outdoor area will include landscaping, a plaza area, and a children's playground area. The second floor will include a community room, presumably two thousand square feet, study areas, magazine area, blah, 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 okay? This is now cast in stone. I don't care how you cut it. This is what the scope of work says. At this point, we've had no real alternatives concerning size or cost. At the so-called workshops that were had, where you were presented with a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot library, take it or leave it. The schematic design meeting is not scheduled until November nineteenth, but now we have the scope of work, which says exactly what the library is going to be. This is disingenuous. As has been pointed out before, the survey that was mailed does not include any questions about a different size or scope. It's a good example of spin. You ask the right questions, you're going to get the right answers. So AFOG is demanding that we have true public input about what we want in a library. And we are not against a new library, but we are against a process that excludes the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Joaquin Jimenez Jr., and then followed by Senior.
Good evening. This is my first time doing this, so please bear with me. My name is Joaquin. I'm nineteen years old. I've been living here since I was two. I grew up in this town. I went to preschool, Hatch, Cuna, and the high school, which I graduated in 2014. What I want to talk about today is how us Mexicans and Latinos, mostly teenagers, are being harassed and racial-profiled almost every time we leave our house. This past weekend, at Pumpkin Festival, my friends and I were followed and photographed and harassed by gang task. We weren't breaking any laws or causing a disturbance. It sucks that we can't even enjoy a festival in our own town while being harassed simply because of the way we look. I have to watch what I wear, where I go, and who I hang out with. There's childhood friends that I, that I couldn't be seen with in public, because I would have been considered a gang member by the sheriffs. I've been here for a long time. I love this town, and I don't plan on leaving. We're the future of this community, and it makes me feel uncomfortable to be treated this way. I don't want other people to feel abused by the own people that we pay to protect us. Now that I'm a taxpayer and pay for these services, I want to, I want my community to feel safe. It seems like the sheriffs are looking to create a problem when there's nothing there. I know you guys can't understand, really can't understand the anger and fear that I feel every day as I leave my house, knowing that, you know, I could be stopped and arrested and harassed for any little thing. But I just want you guys to know what's happening in our community before it's too late. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Joaquin Jimenez Sr. I'm assuming that's your dad behind you.
Good evening. Let me relax. I'm getting emotional.
Take your time, just breathe.
Let's see, on, on Sunday, I got a call from my son, the sheriff department. I was taking pictures of them. I mean, I walked downtown to see what was going on. When I make it to the place where this was going on, my son told me, well, you know, the pictures, you know, the videos, they were being followed around by the gang task force. At that time, you know, one of the units, one of the patrol cars, you know, shows up at the location. I walked towards, you know, to the, towards the patrol car. As a concerned parent, I'm very concerned. And when I got close to the...
Just having a conversation. So talk, look straight at me.
To the patrol car, you know, I asked deputy, you know, what are you guys doing? You're racial-profileding these kids, right? What you're doing is illegal. At that time, one of the deputies, the driver, he swung open the door, came out of the car, he grabbed me by my, by my vest, and he, he pushed me. He, he grabbed me like this, pushed me really hard, about ten, fifteen feet, backwards, fast. At the same, at the same time, he was telling me, get on the fucking sidewalk. The other deputies got out of the car, they surrounded me. I thought I was going to get beat up. I did. I put my hands up. When I was being pushed, I'm walking backwards, trying to keep my balance, going like this. The whole thing was, when I asked them what they were doing, they said, those guys right there, they're gang members, and you're interfering with their investigation. And because you work for the department, because I work for the Jordan Operations Department, they told me that I was going to do my job, because I was telling them that they were racial-profiling my son, my nephew, and their friends. So it is scary. And it's been going on for many years. I'm kind of emotional today, and yesterday, and on Sunday, and on Saturday, and the whole last week, because these kids are going every week. We have Cuna students, high school students, that have been photographed by law enforcement as they're walking on the sidewalk.
Mr. Jimenez, and we've given you a lot more time, and this is clearly a serious issue, and we can have staff and appropriate people that can talk with you on this. And I appreciate your bravery in coming and speaking in a public forum like this. I think we have a lot of communication to do. And we'll get the right people.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to meet with Mr. Joaquin and talk with him directly and get the full story. Three minutes is not enough time, and certainly this is the appropriate, in my opinion, place to be able to have a dialogue. So I'm happy to do that. If he's interested in that, I'm happy to meet with him at any time.
One last thing. I will meet with you, because it's an easy for me to be right here and saying this. But I think enough is enough. And we lost one life already, either hence or the sheriffs. Don't want to lose another one.
Thanks to both of you. Mr. Jimenez, I'm with you, so our city manager will follow up with you. Thank you. And next, we have Lauren Hicks.
Hi. It's also my first time here. So partly, I'm here in support of both Joaquin and Joaquin Jr. I've seen this kind of stuff happening in this community since I was a teenager. I was a victim of a lot of harassment when I was a teenager, and I think it speaks to a much deeper issue in this community. It's not just the sheriffs. It's not just these kids or the gang members, the few gang members that actually are in this community. It's not that. There's this huge divide in this community. It's like there's two different communities here. There's the white community and the Latino community, and then the small group of others that are in the community. I fall in that small group of others. And I feel like, I mean, I don't know if you guys have a diversity committee or any committee or any sort of diversity training that's required for people that work for the city of Half Moon Bay, or work for the high school, or work for any of the middle school, or the middle school, or any of the elementary schools, but I feel like it's really sad. It's really heartbreaking that we all live in this beautiful community. We all love this beautiful community so much, and that incidents like this, like what they're speaking to, are happening on a regular basis. And so many people here are either, on one side, they're unaware of these things, or on the other side, they're victims, and they don't know how to speak out, and they don't know how to stand up for themselves. They don't know that there's a city council meeting that they can come to. They don't know that there's anyone that's willing to listen to them. And I think that it's kind of like the community's responsibility. It's all of your responsibility. It's my responsibility as a citizen here. It's everyone in this room's responsibility to try and figure out what it is that we can do so that everyone can live here and feel safe here and feel welcome and get along, because we're all here, and we all love this community. I mean, we all love this community, and that's why we're here. And it's just, it breaks my heart to see over and over and over and over again all these different things that divide us and divide us and divide us. And there is a lot of blatant racism in this community, and I know no one ever wants to talk about that, because it's scary, and it's uncomfortable, and no one wants to talk about things that are scary and uncomfortable. But if we don't talk about them, how are they going to change? How are we ever going to see anything different? And if you all love this community as much as I do, as much as they do, as much as anybody else, which I think you do, because you're here and you're the mayor, you know, let's do something about it. That's my request, I guess, this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll conclude our public forum. We'll go now to consent calendar. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve consent calendar items one through seven. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Muller?
Yes.
Sorry. Vice Chair Kowalczek?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me.
You can have a two-minute break, yes.
Excuse me, Mayor. I handed in a card for item number six, so it needs to be pulled. Do you receive that card?
We're coming up to those items in a few minutes.
I thought you said six has not been decided. One to seven is what I just heard.
Okay, so my agenda is totally off. Can I have a paper copy?
My agenda states it is part of our resolution and hearings tonight. It's not on the consent calendar.
The agenda, I've just sent over my notes. The agenda numbering was incorrect, so I don't know if you have a clean copy or an old copy, a new copy or an old copy. We have six and seven. As items to be discussed. What Mr. Roebuck is looking for is the J. Powers agreement.
No, no, it's SEQA. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the Powers, yeah, right, that's correct.
Yeah, the SEQA agreement, which is number six on the consent calendar.
That's correct, and I handed in a sheet with number six.
I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that we had some issues with the program for producing the agenda. The numbering was incorrect, so the original agenda that was published combined two of the items under one number, so it looks like a big giant, a big giant one. So what I just handed you, Madam Mayor, is correct in terms of the numbering. So it's a separate item. It looks like one big item in the original agenda.
I'm not following you. I have, for item number six, which would be a staff report, which we would hear, I have city and county library project funding agreement for number six. For item number seven, I have library project, shared parking with Cabrillo Unified.
So the piece of paper that I just sent over with red notes on it, that's my agenda.
Okay, so John doesn't have it, I don't have it, and...
Can you get us copies?
Madam Mayor, perhaps we can take a two-minute break to get copies of the agenda.
Yes. Okay, we'll figure that out. I have a card, which I was going to hear from you in item number six, so...
Right, and, yeah, fine.
We'll figure what that six is.
Okay, we're going back to session.
So Reed, I made a motion for the consent calendar items one through seven, and I did so erroneously. I'd like to revise that motion. Do I have to do anything to undo the previous motion?
Simple matter of declaring that you're going to withdraw that motion from consideration and make a new motion since there hasn't been a second.
I withdraw my motion for approving the consent calendar, and I'd like to revise the motion to be as follows. I move to approve consent calendar items one through five and seven.
And then I withdrew my second on that first motion and second the second motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes. That was one to five and seven. We're going to hold six till the end, and we are going to go to item number eight. That is city-county library project funding agreement.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kojician here, deputy city manager for this great city. I'm here to present tonight on the city-county library funding agreement. So if I can please get the PowerPoint up, appreciate it. I think we're having a couple of technical difficulties real quick right now. So I'll just go ahead and...
Alex, go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Now you guys have PowerPoints in front of you. So a little bit of background. So the library funding agreement is a formal contract between the city and the county memorializing the joint partnership between the agencies to build a new co-site library. The library funding agreement is based on the current language of Section F of the San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Agreement, where the county of San Mateo agreed to contribute 50% of the costs associated with any such replacement or modeling of the library in recognition that approximately 50% of the population served by the Half Moon Bay Library comes from the unincorporated areas. The city currently has set aside $6 million in reserves for its portion of the new library project. The county has budgeted, in its budget this last year, $11 million, up to 50% funding for the project. Per the agreement, the county will match, on an ongoing basis, dollar for dollar, all city contributions that are made to the city's restricted library capital fund, Fund 16. Fiscal impact. Currently, the data that we have is from the 2014 conceptual estimated project cost using a 25,000-square-foot model. Soft cost, $3.946 million. Furniture, furnishing and equipment and technology is $1.843 million. Total project cost, you're looking at $22.821 million. And the construction cost is $17,032,000. There's going to be an updated estimate to be completed when the design work begins. Construction costs, just to note to you all this evening, construction costs have escalated and are continuing to escalate at a rapid rate. So some highlights of the library funding agreement. The county agrees to contribute one-half of the costs associated with the library project. As owner of the library facility, the city is responsible for completion of all aspects of this library project. County staff and stakeholder participation on executive and technical project work groups. City will establish a dedicated fund for maintenance and accounting of all funds contributed for the library project. The city may request that the county deposit additional funds in the dedicated account to match the city's contribution, and the city will maintain the new library upon project completion. The next steps, if the council wishes to approve this agreement this evening, the county board of supervisors must also approve the agreement, and that would be slated for this coming November for it to take effect. So the recommendation before the council this evening is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the city-county library project funding agreement. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Also, before you this evening, the resolution is in front of you, as it was in the agenda packet, so I just want to bring that to your attention as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex, for that brief report. This has been a long time coming. I know that Supervisor Horsley had to leave, and Supervisor Grue wanted to be here this evening, but she's hosting an event. This was put into play eight, nine years ago for the city of Half Moon Bay. So we are at the point where we're finally being able to utilize this, and this is the county's share of helping the unincorporated be a part of the library for the coast side. We do have a couple of comment cards tonight, so we'll hear those. First up, we hear from Jimmy Benjamin and Bridget O'Farrell.
Yes, good evening again, council members and staff. Jimmy Benjamin, 400 Pillar Citos Avenue. Others have spoken to the question of the content of the library, and I won't be redundant about that, but I did comment briefly some time ago that I had reservations about the funding process. And I want to say, to be very clear, I understand that this doesn't propose new taxes. I frequently hear that, and I want to acknowledge that I do understand that. However, the report that I just saw addressed capital construction costs. It didn't represent maintenance costs. It didn't represent operations cost, other than, as I understand it, the payroll, which I understand would be footed by the county. But the operational costs and the maintenance costs, it appears that will be footed completely by us. That concerns me, because that puts a new strain on our general fund budget unless we have that tax change that I, again, acknowledge is not part of this proposal. And we have some other urgent projects. Storm drainage maintenance would be a good example, but by no means the only one. I also want to point out the nexus between the assumptions of accessibility by the unincorporated areas to the north and south, especially from the north, and the growth plans that we saw in the presentation earlier this evening. The model of two-to-one ratio of non-commute time to commute time is a very dangerous metric to use to define a level of service, because as the growth in the mid-coast area continues and the non-commute time for travel grows, which it doesn't constrain at all, let's say at some point 10 or 15 years from now, it takes an hour to get there during non-commute times. During... times. During the weekends or during the commute hours, that's a two-hour trip. It's not practical for the members of the mid-coast to use the library under those circumstances. I'm not saying that I don't want them to be here. I do. And I'm not saying that it's not an interesting idea to make it work. But the dovetailing of this with your general plan assumptions needs additional work before that's a credible model of how the library will be used. Thank you for considering my comments again this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to voice them.
Thank you. Bridget, followed by John Ellam.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Bridget O'Farrell, and I live in Moss Beach on the north coast in the unincorporated area. And I wanted to come this evening to just express my excitement about the new library and the outreach of the community meetings that we've had. I particularly appreciated one of them being up on the north coast at the Farrellon School to make it easier for us to all be there. And tonight, I particularly wanted to take this opportunity to thank the county board of supervisors, particularly Supervisor Horsley and Supervisor Groom, who have been so supportive of this project and this agreement that you're discussing and voting on tonight to fund the library, so that those of us who live in the unincorporated area and are not part of the Half Moon Bay community have been fully represented, and that this library will be one that will serve the entire coastside, and those of us in the unincorporated area will be able to access it and have full participation in it. So I particularly wanted to thank the board tonight for their support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. John Ellam, followed by Hope Atmore.
This will be real short. I understand that the part of the financing is, community financing is being done through the Friends of the Library. And per their website, looks like they're committed to $1 to $2 million. I'm not really clear on how much your plan counts on that, but per Guide Star, they have probably got less than $300,000. If you look at their 990Ns that they filed over the last six years, they've never had more than a $50,000 year. Now, that's an amazing amount of money if they've got $300,000 in my book. But if you're counting on a million to $2 million, that ain't going to happen, unless there's a pile of money I don't know about. They don't have to disclose anything because they're such a small organization, it's hard to really know what their finances are. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope Atmore.
Thank you, council. Thank you, John.
Mr. Button, hope, please.
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to many, many people donating to the Friends of the Library. We are doing what we committed to do, and we're going to keep on doing it, so we appreciate it. But tonight, I just wanted to come in and say that this is just one more step. It just represents another step toward a project that is almost 15 years in the making. It comes after multiple, multiple needs assessments and hundreds of hours of outreach, multiple conceptual designs, and the efforts of countless volunteers, city, county employees, and elected officials. All of that has been ongoing, but the one thing that has been constant through all of this is that our totally insufficient and inadequate library has not changed. It is just as inadequate now as it was 15 years ago when we knew it needed to be replaced. The staff and that space have been working on overdrive to make it work, and they do a great job, but through the work of many people and many agencies, our wonderful city of Half Moon Bay is in a totally unique position tonight. And that is that we are the only community in the entire San Mateo County Library, JPA, to ever be offered a partnership like the one that we are seeing tonight. And that's because the county recognizes that not only does this library serve the city of Half Moon Bay, but it serves a large group of people in the unincorporated coast, and that this project cannot be put off any longer. The county knows that. The city and the rest of the coastside need this space, and we needed it more than 15 years ago. And that's why the county is offering this fantastic partnership. So we have the opportunity to finally have the library that will meet our needs both now and 50 years from now. And I just want to say that, on behalf of the Friends of the Library, I'm very, very excited about that. So thanks very much.
Thank you. That concludes the cards. Bring it back to council. Discussion. Vice Mayor? Are you...
Okay, just so for clarification, I have the Garrities, both of you. Correct? Okay.
I'm speaking on behalf of AFOG organization, and like we have said, we do believe that we need a new library. However, a $23 million library, $23 million is a lot of money. We need to ensure that the citizens of Half Moon Bay knows and understands how much money and what kind of debt our city is going to take on. For true transparency, there should be a chart, for example, showing our old debt and what the new debt is going to be for citizens of Half Moon Bay. The citizens should not have to be looking at, like, old staff reports or reading blogs to try and get this information. In AFOG's opinion, the staff report has not identified the true fiscal impact of this agreement for the homeowners in Half Moon Bay. According to the staff report in February of 2015, they said that the yearly maintenance and utility cost is going to be $250,000. That's yearly. Our current is $69,000, meaning it's broken up. The city's paying $39,000, and the county's paying 30. Also, in the February of 2015 report, it says that the city will be putting $200,000 per year in a sinking fund, which is the right thing to do for long-term maintenance costs, but currently we don't have that for our library. We're talking a lot of money here. And then the bonds, to pay off the lease revenue bonds, I've heard anywhere from 300 to 400. We really don't know, because we don't know how much we're going to have to put on lease revenue bonds and for how long. And then also, in the staff report, I read that the city of Half Moon Bay is going to have to have a $2 million insurance, liability insurance. So how much is that going to cost us per year? This is getting to be pretty heavy-duty money, probably around $800,000 per year, as long as we have to keep paying off the lease revenue bonds. With that kind of money, are we going to have... Yes, there's not a tax increase right now, but what's going to happen later on when there's issues that the city's going to have to address and we need more money? Are we going to be seeing tax increases? Are we going to be seeing a bond come up at election time? You know, I personally wouldn't buy anything... I wouldn't buy a car unless I understood the full financial fiscal impact that I'm going to have to encounter. I don't understand why the city is asking the citizens of Half Moon Bay to buy a library without understanding the full fiscal impact. So I'm asking you, and AFOG's asking you, to please not enter into this financial agreement at this time, to please slow it down. And we're also asking if you could please rework this contract and have a shared cost with the county for the lifetime of the library building, which could be 50 years or so. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Frank Garrity?
Good evening, council and staff. Frank Garrity, Half Moon Bay, also representing AFOG tonight. We need a new library. There is no doubt that we need a new one, and we are in favor of that. The open government issue tonight is the funding. The funding is a transparency issue because much of the funding plan has not been disclosed to the public. Tonight's agenda and staff report discuss the construction cost, but does not disclose the ongoing operating costs of a 25,000-square-foot library. Three costs come to my mind in particular. First is the ongoing maintenance and utilities costs. It is a safe assumption that the maintenance and utilities costs will be much higher on a 25,000-square-foot building than they are for our current 7,000-foot building. The taxpaying public has a right to know what the new ongoing maintenance and utilities costs will be compared to what we are paying now. We're hearing that it could be as much as several hundreds of thousands of dollars per year, on top of what we're spending now. So another question along with that is, will the county pay for one-half of the ongoing maintenance utilities costs? If not, why not? Because as your staff report says, one-half of the population that the library will serve are county residents. Second cost comes to my mind is the insurance cost. The staff report says the city must carry a $2 million insurance policy. The public's questions are, are we currently carrying that much? And if not, then how much more will the new insurance cost the city compared to what we are paying now? Again, will the county pay half of that? Since half of the population served will be county residents, or is Half Moon Bay going to bear the brunt of it? The last cost that came to my mind is opportunity cost. Opportunity cost is what you do not get because you're spending money somewhere else. It's how economic theory works. Money is finite, it's limited. There's only so much of it. There's only so much of it in my house, at my workplace, in clubs and organizations, and in my city. And if you spend a lot of your money in one big grand thing, you don't have much to spend on many other little things. The public finds it hard to believe that the city of Half Moon Bay can afford to spend over $11 million upfront and an extra possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on top of what we're already spending in the ongoing operating expenses. The public has a right to know what we will not get if we do get a $23 million library and all the associated operating costs that go along with the 25,000-square-foot building. You keep saying there's no new taxes. Well, that's great, but it's still money. You're comparing apples and oranges. Whether the money comes from new taxes or it's money we've got in a bank account, it's still money that we're spending here, and if we spend it here, there's none to spend here. Or if we spend a lot here, there's less to spend here. So the new taxes, forget about it. Doesn't mean anything. So in the interest of transparency and open government, please put on your website, please make the public aware of all the costs associated with different sized libraries that are being designed. The survey you put out is completely useless at the moment. You cannot intelligently answer that survey without knowing the cost. You cannot choose pieces to pick and choose if you don't know what those pieces cost. Let us know what it costs. Thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes our comments. Bring it back to council. I'll make a few brief comments, since I've been involved with this for a very long time, a little longer than most, actually. No, not as long as Councilmember Ruddock. She was mayor at the time the 33,000-square-foot library was proposed, and that was $20 million at the time. But that was 15 years ago, and here we are now. We have accepting $12 million from the county, which was put in about eight, nine years ago. And that was when current Assembly member Gordon was a board of supervisor, and in fact, Senator Hill also was involved with the library as well as the JPA. They were very much wanting to help Half Moon Bay and the whole entire coastside get a library. But where we are right now with accepting this $12 million, with the $6 million that we have, we certainly are in a better shape than we were through the years of ups and downs, as it was 2012, when we first started looking like this could be a possibility to build the library that the community had wanted. So currently, that would be 18 of 22 million dollars. Now, one of the things we have to remember, too, when we talk about financing, is in 2019, we have the Beachwood debt paid off. And right now, we pay 1.2 million annually on this. So if we do some great... So that's $4 million we need. And if we all band together, instead of fighting this, try and raise some money for the community, we can do this. So if we come shy, we don't raise 2 million, or we raise 1 million, we still have 3 million more. In 2019, we have 1.2 million freed up. So that means a library could be paid off in five or 10 years, however much the council decides to structure that. Most libraries right now in San Mateo County have a debt for $30 million. They don't have near the amount of money raised that we have for this. And as far as I'm concerned, there's no finer thing you can have in your community, because whether it's recession or whether it's great economic times, the library, all across America during recessive times, was the most-used facility. That was everyone across the board, from people who lost their jobs, looking for new jobs, for people who were looking for new skills. Everyone uses it. So to invest, to be the community that puts this as a priority, is something so basic you should do, because it crosses every single person and every single stratosphere of economics. And why don't we, in Half Moon Bay and this entire coastside, deserve a 21st-century library? Do we not deserve that? And I've said it before, but I'll say it again, that building was built 45 years ago, and the building before that was a small room, less than a third of the room we're in now, and they built a 7,500,000-square-foot building. They saw into the future. It's in the perfect location, right next to our middle school. It's down the street from our senior complex. Patterns of transportation have changed. You could have 70 people in that library, and there might be five cars in the parking lot. How did they come? The moms in their strollers, the kids on their bikes, the kids coming across from school. You don't have to have a car for every person that's in the library. Our patterns of transportation are changing, and we get there. So let's build this. If you think it costs a lot, then help out and raise some money. $5, $10, $100, whatever you can with a couple of zeros. Let's build a library, not a cheap one, not a short-changed one. Let's build the library for this community that we deserve, that every resident deserves. Counsel?
Counsel?
Go on.
So a couple of comments. This is a complex project, and as some of the speakers pointed out, there are a lot of moving parts. And with a lot of moving parts, there are... You never have perfect information or all the answers, but we certainly have a lot of the answers for a $22 million project. I think about the interests sometimes expressed to stop the project, reassess, make it smaller. It's a certainty, if we do that, that we will end up with a 20... Either a much smaller facility for the same or higher cost, or no facility for five years. We have the perfect opportunity with tremendous leadership and facilitation to get community input. Everybody has been invited to participate and express themselves and be heard and contribute to the process for the development of the new library. And it is unprecedented that we will be able to build a library with no tax increase to our community. It's unheard of. There are some people that are challenging that. Perhaps they prefer a tax or a different financing mechanism. That's their preference. My preference is the path we're on, to fund our library with no tax increase to our community. That would be amazing. So I want to keep moving forward. I want to keep moving forward quickly, but I don't want to move so fast that we don't listen to our community and we don't hear from everybody. We must hear from everybody, and that's part of our community outreach process that's active and ongoing and will continue, and that should continue. And we'll continue to answer questions, but the big question around funding the library, I fully support. And John, I'll make a motion, unless you want to make comments first.
Yeah, I'm interested in you making your motion soon, but I think first, when you're looking at a business scenario and you're looking at new construction, you're talking about the future. And I don't care, anybody in this room, the future of construction and building and expanding is a debt. It's very simple. And a debt is an obligation that we will have to commit to and pay off. And the comment was made that we're in debt. I think we've done a pretty good job clearing up our debts. This council, the three of us sitting here, have worked really hard to ensure that a $20 million error made by other individuals is going to be paid off. And so I think that's very important to say it was a debt. We buckled down, and we all worked hard, and we're clearing it up. And there's not too many more years, and it'll be gone. And I think that's what the future is. You want to build something on cash basis that won't have a debt? I don't think there's anybody in the community that can do that. And I don't think that's the way you do business. The way you do business is... The way you do business is you look to the future, and you make an obligation, and you assume a debt. It's as simple as that. That's what we're in the business for. We're not in the business for saving money, number one. And with the motion coming up, I want to tell you, my 40 years of being involved in a leadership position, one always remembers the key votes made in a career. And I've made a few in my other positions. And I can tell you, tonight's vote will always be remembered by me, and I'm proud to be here for our city and our coast side to make this vote, so we ensure the future of the whole coast side. And as was mentioned by a speaker, there's not too many times, and I know we've received a lot of criticism regarding a recent potential grant, and all of a sudden, we have someone stepping up saying, "We're going to give you half of the funds." I think that's a great testament to the elected leaders of San Mateo County Board of Supervisors and their commitment to all of us on the coast side and to this city. And as I said, I will remember this vote tonight when I take it, and I'm proud to make the vote after the motion is being made.
With that, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the city-county library project funding agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kowalczek?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Happily yes. Thank you. We move now to item number nine, and this is library project shared parking with Cabrillo Unified School District.
Good evening again, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Codey can hear. Tonight I'll be presenting on the library project shared parking with the Cabrillo Unified School District. As part of the library project, project team staff has been exploring the possibility of shared and/or additional parking for the city's library project with the Cabrillo Unified School District. Should the school district be open to collaborating with the city, some benefits may include providing shared and/or additional off-street parking for the library and improve traffic circulation for the vicinity. Conceptual study, trying to get my notes here all up. Conceptual studies indicated that a shared parking strategy could be potential to meet the needs for a new library. This item is simply seeking authorization to see if there is mutual interest with the school district board, and if so, work towards an agreement. Any subject cost or subsequent agreement would be subject to school board and city council approvals. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead. We do have a card, and that is Pam Fisher. Thank you.
First, I want to say, Mayor, I have contributed hundreds of dollars. I wish I could contribute more, and I encourage everybody to contribute to it. There is absolutely no question that we all want a new library. The question has come in terms of size and scope, and on that particular lot, which brings us to the question of parking. Now, I heard, what was read was that something would be built on the school property, additional parking, and maybe Alex could answer that question. Is this going to be in addition to parking that is already there? Or is this shared parking of the Cunha parking lot? Because that may create a problem, and this is something I spoke to library people about. Unfortunately, had all the projects occurring in this area, the skate park, the new gymnasium, the new library, had they been all by the same lead agency, this would have been a segmentation of project. If you consider them all together, they all would have to be considered in terms of traffic and parking, because it's affecting, it's a cumulative effect on the area. So that is the one issue that actually the Boys and Girls Club New Gymnasium is also using as their mitigation, the additional parking, the parking spaces at Cunha Middle School. My question is, can two projects requiring mitigation related to parking both use the same parking spaces? As far as I remember, one car fits in a space. So I don't want you to run into a problem. And that is the reason why on Nextdoor and all of these other places, we've just been putting out these questions. I'd rather be sure that this project is going to be approved without secret challenges, without problems. There is no question, Marina, we are all on board in terms of the need for a new library. And I really do believe that it will be almost an attractive nuisance if you don't have enough parking. So I would just encourage, you haven't even met with the school district yet, I'm sure they'd be happy to work something out with you, but if it's building something, I've been going down there, and I'm just not sure where that could be. That discussion hasn't been made public, so, you know, we'd be very interested in finding out. So you've got a pleased populace. However, I still think you could do a better deal with the county. It's not our problem that this has not been done in the past. We deserve more from the county than they right now are willing to give you. This building is going to be on, we're paying county taxes and city taxes. This building, for 40 years after this phase, is going to be on our side. We're the ones that are going to have to contribute, and I don't believe the county should be let off the hook. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Benjamin?
Thank you. I begin the order. You had my card.
Hi.
Hi, Jimmy Benjamin again. Thank you for hearing the comments on the previous item. I regret what sounded to me like a lot of demagoguery of people who had questions. I assure you, their affection for the city and their enthusiasm for the library is no less than yours. They simply bring a different point of view, and I would respectfully ask you to respect them rather than regard them as, I don't know, naysayers or obstructionists or whatever that is. They're good people, and we're all in this town together, and I'm asking you to see them in that light. I appreciate every time you say thank you to someone who speaks in public, and I'm not lost on that. In this parking question that you're asking here, I do have a sequel concern, and I just want to put a slightly sharper edge on it than Ms. Fisher did a moment ago. Regardless of whether the lead agencies is different on these projects, the demand for parking is cumulative, and the sequel analysis needs to reflect that. We could try to let the project tail wag the general plan dog by revising the general plan circulation requirements for parking. And I acknowledge that some people will come to the library on foot, the senior center or the kids from the high school. I concur with you about that. However, there's a large segment of the town that would not be able to get there. They're outside of the one-mile radius, they're in Sea Haven, they're Alcestel, Lorraine, Casa Del Mar. Those people will use cars to get to the library, maybe bikes, but I'm guessing cars. It would be a strong assumption to assume it's more. And the folks from the mid-coast who are getting there, if they can get there over the lifetime of the library, will certainly be using their cars. So our analysis of the parking requirements in the conversations that you'd be entering into with the school district need to begin with a robust assessment of the number of cars that we have to service at the peak times, especially if we're predating the rest of our design assumptions on adequate parking. The Burlingame Library, one of our other citizens interviewed their staff, and they said that even though they would have more parking than we had currently in our design at their library, and their library was smaller than the one that you just made a motion for on item eight tonight, that they did not have enough parking. So I'd encourage you to take a very close look at the other libraries and how much parking they require, and compare those models to the models of parking that you would envision, not just for the library, but the cumulative demand of the many projects that are taking place in our area. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. John Elam?
Hello, Greg. My fact, I was there at the meeting, May 2014, when you were at the school, was at the school board meeting, and you proposed this very idea. So that was over a year and a half ago, and it sounds like you've gone nowhere with it. And obviously, it's something that's always had to have been part of the plan, because the plan was to remove all the parking the whole time, and you knew it back in 2014. So it's a real simple question, what happens if they don't agree? What if they say no? Has there any plan for that? Has there been any discussion about that? Because that would pretty mess things up, right? But after a year and a half, you have nothing to say about any discussions that have been going on with them? Great. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the cards. Counsel?
I just believe briefly that in our continuous discussion with the school district, I think it's very important to, I'm a big believer in the library system in America subsidizes education. It gives them an opportunity to continue their education, and the proximity there is very encouraging for all the students to be able to work there and come by there. And, you know, when we heard comments tonight about the other cultures and walks of life, I think the library is definitely very diverse. We're seeing it every day there, driving by. And I believe there's some positive negotiations that can continue on with the school districts. They understand the value of education, so I'm confident that we can continue to move forward and hope for the best with all these processes we're going through.
Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the speakers, and Jimmy, I think it is important to thank all the speakers, because it's not always easy to stand at the microphone, either in support or in dissent, but I do appreciate all the comments. I think collaboration is important. As I said for the previous item, this is a huge project with a lot of moving parts. One big moving part to resolve is parking, and I think it's important to approach and collaborate with the school district about their facilities, their property, their parking, and how we can work together to provide adequate, appropriate parking for this project. So with that, I move to direct staff to approach, discuss, and negotiate the possibility of shared and/or additional parking for the city's library project with the Cabrillo Unified School District Board.
Guess it looks like the three of us will shoulder these motions and second, so I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Yes, thank you. So go talk to them now officially about parking. Now we'll have item number six, we'll go back to, and thank you for your patience in waiting on that with our number changes this evening. And if you, you're there. I'm sorry, I was looking the other way. Please, John.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers. Harvey, thank you for giving me a heads up in terms of where you want to go with this. So I'll hopefully focus really on the reason I asked for this item to be pulled. This is the request to enter into contract with David J. Powers Associates for sequel review for the library project. You will note, and as was identified prior, there is a very extensive discussion of what the contractor understands to be the scope of the project as it stands right now, and understanding that that is basically the absolute maximum point of the project, which is the 25,000 square feet, and basically the idea of what the use is and what those internal distributions are from that perspective. And so that's why that project description is put in that manner, so we can look at what, I hate to categorize, but what some have categorized as the worst-case scenario, I look at as the most potential impact, or whatever you want to look at it. It all sounds pretty negative. But bottom line is, sequel requires us to look at a very broad perspective, and so that's where we're starting from. Anything reducing down from that point is generally considered to be a reduction and an improvement in the situation and a work toward a more environmentally superior project. I noted in the staff report, I think it's critical to sort of least say, we looked at and still have a certified mitigated negative declaration for the 33,600 square foot library. That is something that is still workable, and frankly, in most jurisdictions, not necessarily coast side, but in most jurisdictions around the state. They probably would have done an addendum to that for the smaller library, whatever size that ends up being. It was staff's recommendation and remains our recommendation that we take a different path, which is to provide for a new mitigated negative declaration or negative declaration, assuming that's where the initial study will land. Obviously, this could still end up in a scoped out as an EIR or a focused EIR of some form, so we don't want to preclude that either, for the public record. But our estimation is this is at, probably landing at a mitigated negative declaration point. So with that, I'll stop talking, but that's the kind of the basis of where this was going, how this was headed, how this was generally scoped, and what the path was to try to find the path which included a new mitigated negative declaration and a full public process and disclosure and comment process. I'm certainly open to any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. And we had, two members of the public had wanted to discuss item number six, so I'll call Harvey Rhabak and Pam Fisher.
Good evening. Harvey Rhabak, AFOG. On April 28th, I attended the Planning Commission's SEQA Presentation Workshop, and I would like to thank the council and the city for arranging an excellent speaker who was from the American Planning Association. I learned a lot about SEQA and what it should and shouldn't include, and it's my understanding that a negative declaration is inappropriate, this is what the courts have said, if it can be fairly argued, that's a term of art, fairly argued that the project will cause significant environmental impacts. And the fair argument standard applies to court challenges to mitigated negative declarations. The fair argument standard entails a strong presumption in favor of requiring full environmental impact reports. It takes only one piece of substantial evidence showing that a project may have a significant adverse impact to require preparation of a full EIR under the standard, even if other and more voluminous contrary evidence exists. Given this very low threshold, there is much less risk of losing a secret challenge if an EIR is prepared from the outset for big or controversial projects. It's not hard to fairly argue that, as you've heard, the cumulative effects of all the projects in the vicinity of the library, the new gym, Cunha Field, skate park, Ted Adcock Center, the church even, which is right there, they'll all result in a significant impact on both traffic and parking. Previous traffic studies have not dealt with the cumulative effects. Furthermore, even in cases where a negative declaration appears to be appropriate, but the project has resulted in significant public controversy, a court may find that an EIR should have been prepared. Courts have stated that the existence of serious public controversy in itself indicates that the preparation of an environmental impact report is desirable. The fastest way to get your library permitted is to make sure that a full EIR is produced. Otherwise, court challenges may very well hold up the project for a very long time. So if you want the project to go forward as quickly as possible, I suggest you start with doing a full EIR from the outset. Thank you a lot.
Thank you. And Pam Fisher?
I'll make this really short, plus one. Again, as I said before, I don't want to wish that this thing just goes through. I want it to go through, and I want it to go through without challenges. And I want it to go through without challenges. So as far as I'm concerned, if I was sitting up there, I would be saying, let's be more conservative, perhaps, than we have to be. Let's do an EIR, and let's consider all of the combined cumulative impacts on the operations of this library as regards traffic and parking. I was at the Boys and Girls Club, their meeting, and again, they are using the same mitigation. Each one of those projects, we're considered individually. There has never been a cumulative assessment for parking and traffic. So I just beg that you be as conservative as possible, so that we know that this project will go through, not hope that it will go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to council. Any comments on this? Councilmember Mueller?
I think it's my turn. I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or her designate to negotiate and execute a contract with David J. Powers and Associates for completion of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA-related documents, including CEQA checklist and anticipated mitigation, mitigated negative declaration.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes 3-0. That concludes all agenda items this evening. And just one last reminder, if you want to learn about more opportunities for renewable energy resources, we'll have an open house this weekend, Saturday, from 9 to 1, same time as the farmer's market. You can come in and out and get information on sustainable energy. So that concludes our meeting for this evening. 9:15. Thanks.